Good evening. Appreciate everyone coming out on this nice Monday. It feels like summertime out there. It's supposed to be November and should be fall, but evidently, nobody has told the weather. So hopefully, we'll get some rain here in the next few days and things will cool down for us. But we do have agendas that are on the podium back here, so if you'd like to grab one of those, you certainly can and follow along with us. Tonight, we have two meetings rolled into one. Normally, this meeting would just be our workshop meeting. And by workshop, that means we don't actually vote on anything other than the agenda. We discuss all the items that we'll be voting on at our regular meeting, which is held on the third Monday of the month. But tonight, because we do have some pertinent business that we need to address, we are going to have a special called meeting. So you'll see through about halfway through the agenda, I'll adjourn the workshop meeting and then open up the special called meeting, which will allow us to vote on the action items that we need to vote on. So just wanted to make you aware of that. Also want to remind everyone that this meeting is aired on our YouTube channel, and it's usually on the YouTube channel within 24 to 48 hours after the meeting, and it is presented unedited. So you can, if you need to go back and review what someone may have said, or what some of the agenda items were, you can certainly go back and look at the YouTube channel to review that. So that all being said, I have called the meeting to order. And tonight, we have a very special guest with us. And this special guest just had a birthday a few days ago. Mr. Trevin Taylor. Trevin, if you want to, do you mind standing up so we can all see your smiling face? Trevin just turned eight years old. So let's do something special for Trevin because it's his birthday. And you know what he wanted to do on his birthday, which was really special to me? He asked to come meet with the mayor. And so it just made my day to have Trevin come and meet with me. And we had a great conversation out in the hallway, and we had a good talk, didn't we, Trevin? Let's all sing Trevin, "Happy Birthday." Can y'all join me and do that? Okay. All right, Trevin, you ready? It's all about you, buddy. Okay. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Trevin. Happy birthday to you. And I asked Trevin if he would do me a very special favor, and he readily agreed. I asked him if he would lead us tonight in our pledge of allegiance. So he's going to ask his Auntie Gail. So Auntie Gail, if you'll come up with Trevin and come up to the podium. All right, Trevin, you ready? Okay, what is, remember, what's the first thing we got to ask everyone to stand, right? Okay, everybody stand. All right, Trevin.
... Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands...
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Trevin. Trevin is very interested in what's happening in government and what's going on around our community. So I have a feeling that there'll be a day when Trevin will be sitting up here in one of these spots. Is that a deal? You work towards that?
Yeah.
Okay, well, if you'll do that, then I'll know we'll be in good hands. So I'm counting on you, buddy, okay? All right, that sounds good. Well, thank you, Trevin. You did a great job, and happy birthday. And thank you for making my day by coming and meeting with me, okay? You know my door's always open. All you got to do is call, and your Auntie Gail knows where to find me, okay? You just come anytime you want to. Okay. All right. Thank you. All right, gentlemen, you have before you the agenda that has been presented. I do have one request to remove one of the action items. Under action items, this will be on the, well, actually, that's for the regular meeting, the special called meeting. Okay, just do it all together, okay. Under item number three, it's considering the RFP for the Investment Management Services. We haven't, there's a meeting that needs to take place before that's presented to us, so we're going to remove that from the agenda this evening, and that will be brought back at our next meeting. So let's, if y'all are okay with that, just, we just don't have all the information that Larry would need to present to us at this point to make a decision on that this evening. Everything else is in order with regard to what's been presented, so I'll take a motion concerning the agenda.
Mayor.
Yes.
Move to a public hearing.
Oh, we do, don't we? There's just that little matter of a public hearing. Well, can I go ahead and approve the agenda, and then we'll go into the public hearing? Okay.
Move to approve.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Second, I said motion to second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Oh, and Lester, I didn't even reference the fact that Lester Cromer, Councilman Cromer, is under the weather, and he is calling in, so he is on the little box down here on the table. So if you hear noise coming from that, or questions, or comments, that's from Lester. So Lester, we hope you get feeling better soon, and we miss you being here this evening, buddy. So, all right, Rob, now back to the order of business. I'll turn everything over to you for the public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to open the public hearing on application number PP22-0042. Before we proceed on the application, I'd like everyone to know that City of Tipton has written public hearing procedures. City of Tipton stands up for exercising zoning powers and applies to Georgia laws is available as a handout if approved for you. This time, I'd like to ask the counsel of the conflict questions. The applicant is Will Flowers Family Trust, involves property on Carpenter Road, I believe. First, at this time, I'll ask members of council, have any of these applicants or opponents to the application contributed at least $250 to any of the campaigns for election during the past two years?
No.
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 Do you or any members of your family have a property interest that would be affected by the proposed rezoning or reclassification of the property, whether there's a positive or negative impact?
No.
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 Do you or any members of your family have a financial interest in any business entity that is a property interest in any real property that would be affected by the proposed rezoning or reclassification of the property, whether there's a positive or negative impact?
No.
No.
So this is application number PP22-0042. The applicant is Will Flowers Family Trust. This is going to request rezon nine-point acres of parcel 0046001H from wholesale light industrial to suburban agriculture, and also resume one-point-seven-three acres of parcel 0046001 from wholesale light industrial and residential professional to suburban agriculture. The purpose of the zoning is to place this land into conservation. At this time, I'd like to ask Crystal Gaylord to come up with our Department of Development and just let the council know what this rezoning request is about.
Thank you, Rob. Getting entered. The Planted Zoning Commission reviewed the rezoning application number PP220042 on October 10th, 2022, and unanimously recommended approval. The applicant, the Steve Flowers Family Trust, is seeking to rezone nine-point-eight acres from parcel 0046001H from wholesale light industrial to suburban agriculture, and one-point-seven-three acres from parcel 0046001 from wholesale light industrial and residential professional. The parcel's split zone, and this portion would be rezoned to suburban agriculture. The current use of the property is undeveloped wetlands, and the property owner is requesting to rezone these acres in order to put the property into conservation program. I have maps and, W maps, and maps of these specific areas if anybody would like to reach them.
All right, any questions for Crystal?
Crystal, how long is there a time that it would stay in this conservation program?
I do not know that answer off the top of my head. I want to say it's 10 years, but that's, I think, from what I've heard, but...
So what, I'd say it's 10 years. So what happens at the end of that 10 years? Does it stay zoned suburban agriculture? Does it go back to what it was?
No, so the zoning would be for suburban agriculture, and it would be for perpetuity. But the conservation purposes, it is a program, and so it, from my limited understanding of it, is, it is a, it's, the property is taxed at a lower rate because it's non-developed, but it would only be in that conservation program for a certain period of time. But the parcel itself, these pieces of it, would stay suburban agriculture forever, or until it's rezoned. It would not revert back or anything like that.
So if it wasn't going to be put into conservation, would, would there be an issue with it being rezoned to suburban agriculture?
No, I don't see it. With it being undevelopable wetlands, it's, I don't see it as an issue. There's suburban ag on Carpenter Road, just a little bit north of that. Bruce Payne rezoned last year to be able to do some stables, so I wouldn't consider it spot zoning or anything like that because there's suburban ag in the area. It does create more split zoning on the parcel, which is not always, it's not illegal or anything like that. It's just a little bit, it makes it a little bit more complex, but not so much ground upon or illegal.
It almost seems like, though, that by doing this, it does create a nice buffer within there, because you've got, you know, it's all, because it is sort of wetlands, and he indicates in his application that with the current zoning, it prohibits him from the conservation use. He would have to rezon it to be able to get the conservation, but it does provide a nice buffer.
And the back portions of the property that's not included in these acres to be rezoned, they're already in conservation right now, and so Will Flowers, the applicant, he went to the tax assessor to get these put into conservation too, and the tax assessor said, well, we can't put these into conservation. They're not zoned appropriately. It's wholesale light industrial, residential professional, and those are not eligible zoning districts for a conservation program. And Mr. Flowers, this all was set in the Planted Zoning Meeting, but Mr. Flowers said, well, those portions were already put into conservation, and Mr. Beckton said that that was a mistake, and that these would have to be rezoned to suburban agriculture to be able to be put into conservation. But there are already pieces of this property that are in conservation, but they were not suburban agriculture.
Okay, I mean, I'm just thinking down the road, and I realize what we did with Bruce Payne, but we, that, we limited what he could put there.
Oh, absolutely.
So this would then be 10 years later, and, you know, question of why did you, you know, why did you do that?
And I guess there's always the potential to limit this, too. I mean, just like Bruce Payne's, it was limited for stable use only. This maybe could be for conservation purposes only. I do know that that's what he's seeking, so...
Is there a way to put it, maybe it's for Rob, that if it's taken out of conservation, it would revert back to current zoning?
Yeah, I've never seen that done before.
Rob, would it be that it just couldn't develop? So if somebody wanted to come, and it is now suburban agriculture, and they wanted to build something that was eligible for, to build on suburban agriculture, maybe it's that they just, you know, can't develop that. Like, on Bruce Payne's property, if they want to do anything other than a stable, they'll be denied. Maybe instead of reverting back to another zoning class, maybe it would be that case.
That would probably be, if not exactly, I guess, a sense of conditional zoning. But I don't know that if you violate that condition, it reverses back to the original zoning classification.
No.
So I think that you could do what you did with Bruce Payne, if you want to say that the property will remain undeveloped as a condition of the rezon. But I don't know that it would revert back to its original...
I just, you know, I'm pretty steadfast in changing zoning around there, and so I understand if it's going into conservation, great. Down the road, I don't want to have a problem for surrounding properties that it's a different zone than when they purchased their property. I generally don't waver from that. So like something that says, okay, if you take out of conservation, you got to come back before we, you know, you can just put something up there. And I hear it can never be built on. I heard that when I bought my house, and across the road, it said it never be built on, and there's six houses over there now, so that sometimes changes.
I guess if we put a condition on it that it would be only for conservation use purposes only, then truly nothing could be built on it, because that would violate conservation uses.
But aren't those, aren't those restrictions already in, within conservation? If conservation designation is going to put that layer on there, I believe.
So he would lose those tax benefits.
Maybe between now and our next meeting, you know, we can look into the conservation issue and determine, you know, what condition we could place on it and see if that would be satisfactory.
Acceptable?
And the applicant, Will Flowers, he could not make it tonight, so if you have any questions for him, I can request that he come to the actual council meeting in two weeks, and he can be here to address those if you'd like to have him here.
I think that would be helpful, just in case there's any questions.
Yep.
And then that will give Rob the chance to review more of the conservation aspect. Everybody good with that?
Thanks.
Mark, so now it's time for public input. At this time, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to the application? We're leaving a public comment, I ask you.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, moving along on our agenda, our next item is a presentation for Hunger and Homeless Awareness Week, November 12th through the 20th, and I know MJ's been working very closely. MJ, do you want to introduce our guests?
Yeah, I definitely want to bring a little light to how we got to this point. Me and Josh have kind of taken the task of our homeless population here, and we talked to some few different people, kind of started compiling a list, and also, I got a phone call or a text from Ms. Skylar Turner, who's the president of the Homeless Project out of, from AVAC. So they're a great group of students from AVAC, and they are here today to bring awareness for Hunger and Homeless Awareness Week, but they're also assisting us with compiling a small card with the list of places and different people that help homeless, that we will try to disperse to our first, first aid people, like police and fire, to give to people and say, these are some locations that you can go to get some assistance if you, or you're willing and you want to get assistance. So they're helping with that as well. But they're here today, and they want to talk a little bit about homeless, Hunger and Homeless Week, so you guys can come on up. Today, we have Ms. Skylar Turner, which is the president right here, and then we have Kaylee Myers, which is vice president, and we have Brianna Menzel, which is the secretary, and Mr. John Cable is back there in the back. He's their teacher instructor, right?
Advisor, yes.
Yeah, advisor, so he's there giving them some support here. But they're here today, and they have a small, something on the screen to share with you guys about the Homeless Project.
Wonderful.
All right, so is this the best place for us to stand?
Yeah, just make sure you stick into that microphone, and then Val will pick it up for the recording, so.
Awesome. Absolutely. Okay, so, hi, my name is Skylar Turner, and we are the AVAC Homelessness Project. And we are a newly formed organization at AVAC, and we are here to just talk a bit about who we are and what we're doing, and what we hope to do. So our purpose, right, first and foremost, to give you the more direct, this is what's in our constitution, what we're doing. Our purpose is to promote homelessness awareness and understanding among AVAC students through events and demonstrations. And we also want to contribute to the available resources at AVAC and in the community through donations and volunteering. So we want to educate people on the issue, and we want to do something about it.
Awesome, hello. So like I said, my name is Kaylee, and I'm the vice president. We only have images because I just think this kind of shows the best about some of the things we've done in the past. Right here, we, so this is something like we're very passionate about, so I apologize if I get a bit emotional, but we wanted to bring awareness to the students at AVAC that homelessness can take form, like, in many different ways. I know a lot of people think, oh, if you see someone out on the street, that's the only form of homelessness, but it's not. We have students at AVAC who they get kicked out of their house, and they don't have any more housing. We work with them the best that we can, especially with housing at AVAC. We see people that are going house to house, like friends' houses going, and sleeping on their couches, they don't have like a permanent home. This, for example, some people will take hammocks, and they'll go to nearby parks, and what they'll do is they will put up like hammocks, and that's where they stay. So what we wanted to do with this is we want to do a hammock donation drive, and so we got together two different places on campus and put up hammocks, and we were like, hey, like, for anyone passing by that was interested, we're like, this is who we are, this is what we're doing, these are the donation items we need. And it was really awesome, because we got to see, like, AVAC students step up and donate so much stuff that we were able to do, if you want to go to the next slide, my bad. And we were able to do this, which is blessing bags. So we got blessing bags together, and what it is, we got items that we thought people may need, we got a whole list and a variety. It's going to be something that we're going to hopefully bring to y'all, along with whenever we bring the information cards. And this will just be something people can donate, and then we'll put them together and pass them out. So if you ever see someone in need, you can have this in the back of your seat, and you can say, hey, like, I don't know what's going on, but maybe we can talk about it. Here's something that could help for just a little bit, until we can figure out some resources. It's really awesome. I'm really glad that we're able to do something like this, and we have the opportunity to, if you're... This is also something else that we've done, is work with RHA. RHA is the Residents Hall Association at AVAC. They're basically the connection between housing and students, and they want to make sure that students' voices are getting heard, but not only that, they have the food pantry and clothing closet, and we want to make sure those resources are heard to students, like, hey, if you need something, these resources are here. So we work with them to bring awareness to that as well.
My name is Brenna Menzel, as told, and I'm the secretary of the Homelessness Project at AVAC. And right here, you are seeing some of the produce that we got, and then some of our members. That was, I'm sorry.
I said, where are we at?
We are at the Wiregrass Farmers Market at AVAC Georgia Museum of Agriculture. And we do this every Sunday from nine to 12.
Saturday.
Saturday, sorry, Saturday. And we are in charge of the finances and just making sure everything goes smoothly.
So to add to that, when we're at the Wiregrass Farmers Market, what we're doing is we're collecting donations, monetary donations, and these donations that we collect, we then turn around and we buy produce from the vendors at the farmers market, and then we take that produce to the local shelters. So we take it to House of Hope, Brother Charlie's Rescue Center, and Boots Cottage. It's a pretty great thing, I think. So what we really came to talk to you about today, I mean, us in general, for sure, but we also have some pretty exciting things coming very soon, and it comes in the form of Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. So as MJ Hall mentioned, this is November 12th through the 20th, and we have some specific events scheduled. So we have another blessing bag donation drive that will start tomorrow and will go until after Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week, until the 28th of this month. And so we will have locations in Bowen Hall, the faculty suite there on campus, but we will also have a collection spot here in the public library, so you can stop by and maybe drop something off. Our goal is to have a list of the desired items on these containers where you will put the donations into. And then later on the 28th, once we've collected all that we can, we will go and assemble the bags with our members, as well as a few other AVAC organizations, so. But something more for the students, because this is focused on the community. The blessing bags are focused on helping those in the community as much as we can. They're available to students, but the point is to have them so if there is a need that we could meet, we're prepared to. So we also are doing a camp out for the homeless, and this is an overnight event that will start on November 17th. And the whole, to summarize it for you, this will involve AVAC students coming on campus, will all come together, and we will make makeshift shelters out of cardboard boxes for nine. And we will do our best to stay outside from 6:00 PM on the 17th to 6:00 AM on the 18th. And there will be food. It won't even almost be like the actual experience, but it's just an opportunity to get a sense of what that experience is like, and, you know, to hopefully promote awareness and understanding and educate AVAC students.
So these are some of our connections. We have set up an email address, and this is our president's phone number and Dr. John Cable's work phone number, if you would like to contact him if you have any questions.
Yes, please contact us if you have an idea, if you want to help. We, we're here as a resource, and we're also a resource to help other resources. So we would love to collaborate any way possible. And we appreciate this very much. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are you kidding? This is amazing. I'm a... Thank you. Skylar, would it be okay if I shared your number? We deal with a lot of local media. WALB and Fox and the various media. Would it be okay if we shared this with the media? Because we need to get the word out about the amazing work that y'all are doing. And my hat is off to all of you. We are all in this community together, and we're very fortunate and very blessed in so many ways, but I think everyone in this room recognizes it could be any of us that could be hungry or homeless or without resources at our, or at our wits' end. And so I think it's up to us to take care of the people in our community that, that have either fallen on bad times or don't see any way, they don't know where to go, they don't know what to do. Any way that we can be a blessing, like I said, I love the name of the blessing bags. I think that's really important for us to do that. So if it's okay, we'll, we'll get the word out to our local media to contact you, because we need to really make people aware and show the good work that you're doing. So, so thank you so much for this. And MJ and Josh, thank you so much for, for this presentation. We will, we will absolutely support this and help in every way that we can. I don't know if it's too late to have a drop-off point here at City Hall. You would certainly be welcome to.
I would definitely say it's not too late.
Okay. Yeah, we would love to be able to do that. I'm saying that before asking my acting city manager, Emily Beeman, but we would love to be involved, because we have a lot of people that come through City Hall every day. And any way that we can help with awareness and to help the cause, either financially through contributions or collecting items, I think would be good. Gentlemen, any, anything you'd like to add?
I was going to say, what a blessing.
Yeah.
To see young people have a passion for this and want to do something for the cause, that's just a blessing. So my hat's off to you girls as well.
Absolutely, absolutely. MJ?
Well, I just thank you guys for being here tonight, and I wanted to bring light to your organization and just applaud you guys and for the great things that you're doing for our community. It, everybody, it takes everybody to help.
Yes, it does. Takes a village. So thank you for that, and we, we greatly appreciate the partnership with AVAC. AVAC is just such an important partnership with our community, and especially when it comes to these type of shining light on these, these types of issues that are community issues. It's not just that over there or them over there, it's all of us. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay, wonderful. Good, good work, ladies. Very good work.
Yep, thank you.
And MJ and Josh, thank you so much for that. I know it's not something that is fixed overnight.
Yep.
It's not something that, you know, one thing is going to take care of. It's a collaborative effort. So I really applaud the work that you two are doing, and thank you for that. It seems that, you know, as the economy is, you know, shaky as it is, and, you know, things that are going on, we're coming off the pandemic, homelessness and hunger are just really, it's really a challenge. And so thank you for the work that you're doing on the council to, to work on that. Lester, any comments that you might have? I don't want to forget you down there. Anything you need to address?
No, all right.
Okay, all right. All right. All right, let's see, where are we? Jessica, I'm confused about our agenda. I've got under new business number two, the review of the zoning application, but there's nothing really for us to review at this point, is there, other than?
No, y'all. One in.
I gave you just a quick look, like, it looks like it was a 10-year covenant.
10-year covenant, okay. Okay, all right. Were there any other questions on the rezoning before we move on to the next slide?
No.
Okay, remember, we removed item number three under the action item, so we'll go on to item number four, and this is an item we'll be voting on. As you're aware, we had an application to the Fox Theater Foundation, so Emily, you want to share the information about the grant that we've received for the Tipton Theater?
This is a resolution to accept the 2022-2023 Fox Theater Grant. This is a grant that we applied for months ago. We did receive the grant, or we were awarded the grant. This is to go before you for acceptance. What this is, the theater marquee is literally falling apart. I have brought for you to look at the letters that hang on the marquee. They are falling off of the sign that is a city sidewalk, so should a resident or a citizen be walking under there, and the letter is to fall... So should a resident or a citizen be walking under there and the letter is to fall, somebody can get extremely hurt. We always say, a child in a stroller, a mother pushing a stroller. If this thing falls into the stroller and hits a child, it could be deadly. That is not something we want to do or have on our backs as a city. But it also is a bad look for the theater. The theater is bright and vibrant. It's a great attraction for downtown. We want to keep it in the historic look as it already is. So what we would do is take the sign down that is there. We would have a digital marquee to replace it. However, the digital marquee would be static. It would not have colors, flashing signs, lights, anything like that. It would look the exact same way that it does now. Obviously, it looks a lot better. This did go before HPC. We got their approval on this to, to move forward in the grant process and we did. The second part of the grant, we would be able to update the neon lights. The neon lights are very old and a lot of times we will find shards of glass laying on the sidewalk. Should a child pick that up, it's just not a good situation. So we would take most of the neon down and be able to replace it with LED lighting for a, a longer lifetime. So that's what this is. We were awarded the grant. It is a matching grant. Seventy thousand dollars. We'll get our first dispersment in December, our second dispersment in June. And we do have funds in the budget for capital improvement for the theater to be able to do this. So this is just a resolution accepting the grant.
When will it take, when will we do the work?
We are starting on the work now. Jonathan is starting the phases up. He met with the company that's going to be doing it today. Fox Theater actually comes and does an onsite visit in the coming week. So I would say probably within a month or two, whenever we can get on their calendar to be here.
Have we taken, are there any letters still up there?
Yes, there are letters up there.
Are we going to take those down?
Yes, they will be. For the most part, they stay up. ESG does a really good job of zip tying the ones, most of them that's not secure. But yes, they will come down.
So, I hear you, most of them. I mean, can we now know it's a known, a known hazard? We either need to take them all off, as well as these places that the glass is falling on the street, or rope off where people can't walk under it.
Right.
I mean, now that it's clear in the public, we know we've got a problem.
It's a safety concern, yes.
And, I mean, we need to take care of that tomorrow.
Yes, okay. What's your opinion?
Alright, any other questions, comments? Well, congratulations to the TIFT Theater for getting this, this Fox Foundation grant. Fox Theater has been a great partner with us. They've, they've sent us, yes, and has, they've awarded us several grants that have benefited the theater. So, very, very good partnership with the Fox Theater Foundation. So we appreciate that very, very much. Alright, moving on to the next item on the agenda, that's, I'm sorry, yes.
Is that an action item? Do we need to take?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I keep thinking we're in workshop. Yes, I'm sorry. Thank you, Rob, for keeping me straight. Alright, that is an action item.
How many to accept?
Thank you, okay. Is there a second? We have a second. So a motion and a second to accept the Fox Theater Grant. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed. Alright, thank you, Rob. Moving on, our board report. You can see that Jessica has provided.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
I just didn't hear him.
Oh, okay, okay. Jessica's provided us with our board report. We did have a vacancy, or do have a vacancy on the Urban Redevelopment Board. And Angela Anderson has met the board requirements, Bruce Green and Victor Pyers. And the URA Board has met and they're recommending Victor Pyers for appointment. So that's something we can vote on tonight. Jessica, is that correct, since we're in a special call meeting? Okay. So, present that for your consideration.
Yeah, me being a part of the board, I mean, I make a motion that we can call with Victor Pyers.
Okay, alright, so we have a motion from MJ. Alright, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you, Jax. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, any opposed. Alright, so that passes unanimously. Was there any other, I didn't see anything else. Jessica, we needed to go over on the board report. That was it, correct? Okay, thank you. Alright, Emily, I'll call on you to present the city manager report.
Okay. Just a few items. We are kicking off for the holidays. We will have a second Saturday Fall Festival this weekend downtown, put on by TMA. Lot, lots of great things.
Your personal invitation.
Lots of great things going on. It'll be fun for the kids. So go ahead and bring them out for the, the festivities. ESG is also working hard at getting all of our Christmas lights put out at the park. Those will come on Thanksgiving night. So we're excited to see that. They always do a really great job with all of our Christmas lights. And I do want to call on Jeff to give you guys an LMEG update. We have a notice to proceed and what roads will be coming. But before he does that, I would like to take my interim city manager hat off and put on my HR hat. Gail Drayton is our chief court clerk. And last week she had to go to a conference. It's the Georgia Municipal Court Clerk's Council. She was voted on for the 2023 board for next year. And it's always really great when we have employees that represent us across the state. We have many that serve on boards. Our IT and special projects director, our manager Jonathan serves on a board. Julie's our GMA president. So, the more that we, the more people we have that really gets out and puts the word out for Tifton, the better it is for us. So we are represented statewide and it's something to be very proud of.
That's awesome. I wish Gail was still here. I know she was here earlier with her nephew, but she, she had to step out. That's great. That's really good.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And also want to remind people, we all have our, we have what I call the alphabet soup of government. We have all these acronyms for different things. Just to remind people, LMEG is Local Maintenance Improvement Grant. And that's what helps us with our roads.
That's right.
So Jeff, take it away.
Alright, just wanted to update y'all. We had the pre-construction conference last week with the contractor. The notice to proceed is on December 1st. I'm not saying they're starting on December 1st. But the notice to proceed, I have seen where they're going around right now and marking roads. They're getting ready. They wanted to be here before December 1st. They said they would if they could. But we set the date on December 1st for the official start date. So looking forward to getting that underway. After talking to them, they're going to come in here and try to finish it all and one go around and be done. Second thing I wanted to update y'all on was the Eighth Street project out there at Publix. Had a meeting with DOT last week. The, it's already been lit. They've had the pre-construction meeting. It will start most likely after the 1st of the year. Right now, it's, a lot of construction companies go to closing and things like that. But after the 1st of the year, they'll get started. Georgia Power did say that they might go ahead and start moving some of the poles out of the way. I know y'all seem to still played out there. We've been waiting nine weeks on a part we need that we've ordered to actually get part of the water main out of the way. They told me it'll be here in two weeks, so we'll see. And I'll try to get that done before. It will be done before, if I had to come up with some other idea, before they get here. And 23 LMEG we have, Jessica did let me know that she's got the application done on that. So we'll be looking forward to that. Hopefully, we'll get it bid first part of, about March of next year and be done with it early. Trying to get the water lines figured out now, but that's my report for that.
Okay. And since we're talking about paving and, and roads and everything, just want to remind people, I know our ESG team and our city team do a very good job of just trying to maintain and, and make sure that our roads are in as good a condition as possible. But if you see a pothole, if you see a broken pipe and there's water running, if you see a clogged sewer, I mean, storm drain, you know, that some, I don't know why people like to put their yard debris on top of the storm drain. Don't do that. But if you see that, all you need to do is give us a call, one of the city council members, call your city council member, call Jeff, call Emily, and we will jump on that right away. And we, we realize we can't be everywhere all the time. And we all know our routes that we take and we're familiar with them and we see when a pothole happens. And so, all it takes is a phone call and I know they, they jump on that very quickly.
Yes, please, please don't dodge a pothole for three or four weeks and not call somebody because we can't fix it if we don't know about it.
That's right. So, so just a quick phone call and we'll jump on that right away. Quick question for you. I know that a lot of our striping has faded in some areas. Or do we have, what's our plan for striping?
We are looking at some different roads. You know, there's no longer a grant to do that with. They cut that out, but we're trying to get some streets together for next year's budget to have a list.
Okay, good.
Now, all the ones that are getting paved will be restripped.
Sure.
May even look if some are close and we could get a cheap job, you know, get it done cheaper. I may come back to y'all and ask if you want to get some of it done.
That'd be good.
I would just, speaking of grants, this is, you know, maybe some of the people that have complained on Facebook will be watching this so they understand. Different grants are for different things. Because we got the grant money last week, I think you went up, doesn't mean we can use that on roads. But I hear, well, I wish they'd use that on pot, well, okay. You're restricted on what you can use this grant money for.
That's right.
So please, the city of Tifton taxpayers pay for every road repair inside the city limits, period. Period. We get no help other than that LMEG grant, those kind of grants. Other than that, it's payable by city of Tifton taxpayers.
That's right.
So we use all the grant money we can that applies to roads. Other grant money has to be used for different purposes.
That's true. Okay. Alright, thank you, Jeff. Alright, any questions, comments for Jeff before? Okay. Alright, Emily, what else we got?
That's it.
That's it? Alright. We'll go through mayor and council comments and then we will need to go into executive session for legal and personnel purposes. Is that correct, Rob? Legal. Personnel? No, legal? Okay, so for legal, okay. Alright, so anybody like to go first?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Alright, in case we didn't know, there's a lot of things going on District 1 right now. Rezoning, I know I've been keeping Crystal's phone pretty high. Thank you for everything you've helped me with. You've been a blessing. But I was just going to reach out and I've talked to some of y'all about it, about us in the future maybe looking in about the whole rezoning process. You know, with R12s and R20s here and there. I mean, I was just going to see what you guys thought about that, maybe in the future looking into something like that.
I think it's an individual, case by case or subdivision by subdivision kind of thing to make. I mean, if it's a specific piece of property within a subdivision that's different from the others, certainly should look at it.
Yeah. My response would be, you know, I think our zoning and all of our ordinances, not just zoning, but, but, you know, that's what we're talking about, need to be evaluated, you know, from time to time. Because times are changing and what people wanted 20, 30 years ago and what communities, you know, how the community was developing 20 or 30 years ago is different than what's happening in today's time. So, anytime that we can, in my opinion, anytime that we can reevaluate, reassess, make sure that we're doing what the community expects to be done. And that's where, you know, the, the comprehensive plan is so important, you know, and getting that input from the community to say, this is where we see growth and development or this is where we want to have the community grow or this is an area that needs to be preserved and maintained. So, I have no problem with evaluating and, and looking at that. I would defer Chris to, to Crystal and her team to, you know, weigh in on that and help with that. But I have no problem in, you know, because she deals with it every day.
That's right.
And she, you know, she, she knows what, you know, what the challenges are. So, if there's something that we could make smoother, you know, for, for the applicants, I think that's a, that would be a benefit, so.
Sure. Well, I appreciate it. The only other thing I have, Emily, I couldn't do this to the mayor, but is there any way we can put the vice mayor in the dunking booth this weekend?
Thank you. I did. I was nominated to be in it as well.
Oh, my. I agree with that.
But, no. But the weather, thank you, it's going to be way too cold, so the dunking booth is out.
So Jax off the hook again.
No. So we are saved.
See, I would have volunteered.
Well, there'll be another one, I assure you.
Oh, yeah, I'll be, that's a mental note.
This was a one-time volunteer.
No. No. Alright, thank you. Anything else, Josh? You're good, okay. MJ?
I would just want to say thank you again to the, the Homelessness Project for AVAC coming in and giving us that good lesson on what they do and how they can help the community as well. Want to reiterate, you know, if you guys are here this weekend, y'all go out to the Fall Festival and participate. Take your kids, take your family, enjoy. Also, want to applaud us again for getting that grant, for making our marquee about to look good and sharp again. And also, I think Abby as well, on her big, big grant that we got over here for Commerce Way coming along. So, just proud of the good movement and traction we got going on right now.
Excellent. Good comments. Jack?
I want to thank Emily for jumping in with both feet into this city manager role. She has just, by view, everything, conversations and that thing going on, phenomenal. I appreciate the job.
Yeah, thank you. Lester, any comments that you have?
Oh, yeah, I kind of feel the same. I just want to thank Emily for the great job that she's doing. And also, I want to thank Jeff and Adam at ESG for giving me an exceptional tour of the water system. I have a great understanding now of the system. And I just want to thank all those individuals for the great jobs that they're doing for the city.
Wonderful. Alright, and I'll wrap things up before we go into executive session. Just want to echo thank you to AVAC for the work that you're doing. It is so meaningful and we're so appreciative. And so just, just hats off again to you and look forward to an ongoing partnership to, to make our community aware that it's not, it's not a bad thing. It's something we can work on together. So, so we'll be having the media contact you, Skylar, and, Skylar, and let them talk to you about what you're doing. And, there you are. I couldn't see, I couldn't tell where you were sitting. And so just listen out. We'll, we'll get some folks to contact you about that. Wanted to let people know that if you are interested in a sign for the renew, the local option sales tax lost, we do have signs that are available, yard signs that you can put in your yard. If you'd like to have one, just let us know. If you'd like to have 10, let us know. We'll get those to you. And there is a website that is up and active. It's a very good website that just has general information about the local option sales tax. There's a list of frequently asked questions. There's contact information. Just good factual details about the importance of the local option sales tax. And that website is tiftaxrelief.com. So I encourage you to share that on your social media. We'll be sharing some of that information on the city's Facebook page and social media pages. And if you'd like signs, let us know and, and hopefully we can come to a peaceful and quick resolution on lost. It's just so very important. Is there any other business to come before the council this evening? Alright, seeing none, I will take a motion to go into executive session for legal purposes. So we have a motion, there's a second.
Second.
Alright, thank you, MJ. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed. Okay, thank you. Alright, we'll take about a two-minute break and then we'll go into executive sessions. Thank you.